Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting in the Round Lake area School District Board of Education at 7:14 PM on April the 15th in Round Lake High School Media Center. If I can get started first with a roll call please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
Alright, first up is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, if I can get an approval of the meeting agenda as posted?
So moved, second.
First by Mrs. Klingler, second by Mrs. Larson. Roll call please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
We have an approved meeting agenda and first up on that is special recognition and presentation and our March Athletes of the Month.
As always, happy and honored to be here to recognize our student athletes for excellence in the classroom and on the field and courts of competition. Our first female athlete of the month for March will be presented by our head girls' track and field coach Kristin Lilla and that female athlete of the month for March is Leila Davila.
It is my honor to introduce you to Leila. Leila is a junior on the girls' track team and the month of March she had career highs in long jump and triple jump in addition to being all-conference triple jumper, which is really impressive when we think about it because it was March 15th-ish and due to her religion she needed to be home by sundown. So she did not get the break in between long jump and triple jump that all of the other athletes got, so she just did her longs and then did her triples and was still able to get all-conference. So we're really impressed with that. Beyond that though, I mean, we're here to celebrate athletes of course, but the person matters, I think, to all of us so much more. And we have such high numbers on the girls' track team this year. We have about 70 girls, which is just stunning. And so we have a lot of new girls just trying to find their way around and Leila has stepped up as a leader, is helping them, guiding them. And if we knew how goofy she was freshman year, this is really incredible to see her kind of take it out of this leadership role. So very well deserving. Again, Leila, congratulations.
volleyball coach Storm Melnick and she will be recognizing from boys volleyball Marshawn Washington.
Hello. So Marshawn, as Ethan said, this is our second year as a program and Marshawn is leading our program in digs for the whole program now, as of today. And then he also has a new position and he has been killing it as libero. He's always willing to step up and play any position that we need on varsity and he really is a good role model for the younger classmen and he will be missed next year since he is a senior. But he has definitely left his mark on our program and I think that whoever tries to take over libero next year will have big shoes to fill for him. So congratulations.
So once again this month, I actually have a supervisor with us again tonight. So tonight we're gonna introduce Alina Martinez who currently works as in organic, with Organic Life and I'd like to have Gio come up and talk to about her work with Alina.
Hello, everyone, good night. On behalf of Organic Life and also myself, I want to thank Alina because she's been doing a tremendous job. I'm Charo the pizza and normally we do it like 60 each day and she helped me at least with 20. So she's been doing an excellent, excellent job and we love her to have her at the kitchen every day because she just bring a lot of joy to us and she's always happy and I like that attitude. So I want to give applause for Alina because she's been doing amazing, amazing job.
So thank you Board of Education for allowing us to recognize all of the students and staff who worked on a very awesome and important project. Earlier this school year, we were approached by the fire department, Chief Tony Sears too, over there, because they had donations of these white plaster dogs that they had given and he wanted to work with our art department on designing dogs that would go in, right now where they're going to be inside for the most part, each of the firehouses in Round Lake. So we were tasked with designing and kind of gave us free rein and each of the schools interpreted them a little bit differently, but the student had, the students had input on what the designs were going to be, the teachers guided them on the painting and how they looked and we just wanted to recognize the hard work that went into painting and creating these amazing, amazing statues that are going to be partnered with our fire department. They are outside in the hallway if you would like to take a look at them and get a close-up view of them after your meeting, I know there's a long one. I also have bracelets that I got for the kids of dog paws so that everyone gets one of those also to commemorate the hard work.
Hi, I'm Tony Carraro from the fire department, one of the battalion chiefs, and I want to thank the students and the school so much and the board for allowing us to partner with you guys. The dogs are beyond our imagination and way beyond our level of creativity and we knew they were in the right hands and we're so glad that we partnered with you and we look forward to doing more interesting projects with the art students from the Round Lake schools. So thank you very much.
here at Round Lake. Brooke Laritzen and Miriam Salsito both earned all-conference and Miriam and her sister Claudia also qualified for sectionals. So very successful first year at the helm for Coach Arias and we're looking forward to continued development of a feeder program exposing students at our elementary schools to opportunities to bowl and building more excitement for our bowling program in the The cheerleading team at the varsity level had to change either their lineup or their routine. At one point, I want to say it was six competitions in a row and they had some athletes that left the program or were injured and to the kids and Coach Barrett's credit, the scores continued to improve and they had their best score of the year at the sectional meet, actually one of the higher scores they've had since I've been here. I can't say that with absolute certainty, but I remember my eyes opening wide when I saw the score. So, and that's, you know, really all you can control if you have your best performance at the biggest, you know, the biggest event, the biggest competition, that's a pretty nice job. So Vanessa Razzo was an all-conference selection for our cheer team this year and we're looking forward to an increased focus not only on strength training, but also on tumbling and making consistent tumbling work more available to all of our cheer athletes. Boys Wrestling Program, had a very successful season, again, under definitely a veteran coach, but first-year head coach Ken Filas, longtime varsity assistant, stepped into the head varsity role this year and had a very, very successful season. We had three all-conference athletes, Grayson Conchial, Alejandro Cordova, and William Cole. We had five all-regional wrestlers, wrestlers who placed at regionals and advanced to the sectional stage of the IHSA state finals. Two champions at regionals. At sectionals at Barrington, we had three athletes advance, meaning they were state qualifiers, and we had two regional, I'm sorry, two sectional champions. I wish Coach Filas were here, he would make sure I get this stat correct. I believe that the last time we had two sectional champions was in the 1980s, I think?
Early 90s, but yeah.
Early 90s.
Late days, early 90s.
So it had been over 20 years. So our, you know, again, you talk about preparation and focus and grit.
Some of the pictures that you've got there, we have our girls' basketball team led several practices for some feeder programs in our middle schools this year. It was really cool. Our athletes helped in the design of the practice, design of the drills, the practice plan, and then they were the coaches. So, great service leader, leadership opportunity for our athletes, but also building bridges with our future Panthers. Our baseball and softball programs helped host a pancake breakfast for Avon Township Baseball and Softball. Pardon me? And each one of our winter sports hosted some sort of Future Panther Night this past winter. So, I'm gonna continue to build upon that, continue to offer opportunities for Future Panthers to be exposed to events at the high school, exposed to opportunities to interact with our student athletes. And to be perfectly honest, our kids are getting, the high school athletes are getting just as much out of that opportunity as the elementary and middle school athletes are, if not more. So, we've been very happy with how that's gone. You can see that my favorite one right here is the photo in the middle. That's from our girls' basketball Future Panther Night. And you've got, it's a little hard to see in the picture, but on the screen there is a photo of, our team photo of our high school team, but also a photo of them when they were fifth graders coming to a Future Panther Night at the high school. So, kinda really paying it forward. So, it's a credit to Coach Henick for having those photos and giving them Janet Walsh to create that graphic, but we thought that was really, really cool. So, our wrestling program did, and I thought, "Thank you, Mr. Peterson." My voice is that scratchy already? We only got 27 more slots? I'm kidding, we're getting there. During our senior night for wrestling this year, they also hosted, they paired it with Future Panther Night, which I thought was something I'd never thought of. I give credit to Coach Ken Filas for that. He thought it would be really cool for the incoming middle schoolers and elementary kids to see and envision their future someday when they get to do their senior night. And it worked out really well. It was a really cool night. So, really happy with the efforts that our coaches are making in terms of outreach to our feeders. Okay, let's jump into our team recamps. Allied Basketball had another very successful season. We hosted our Buddy Ballers Tournament again. Also, we're privileged enough to play in Gray's Lake North's The Big Game, which we do every year. A lot of new kids in, on the team this year, but really just displayed exceptional sportsmanship in all of their games, played with a ton of joy, and it's just, I mean, really, really fun and cool to be around them and be a part of our allied sports program. They're in the middle of the allied soccer season right now, and we're looking forward to next month celebrating. Three of our allied athletes will earn the Howard Conkling 12 Sport Award at our senior banquet, so we're really excited for that. Our boys' basketball program, first year under new head coach Jack Hansa. Jack is a social studies teacher here at the high school. Very young team, great athlete retention, significantly higher than last year, and with an intentional focus on character and culture. Our kids played very hard every game regardless of the score. Our freshman team, that's a typo, they were actually 15 and 11, not 15 and 12, I apologize. And an additional six wins at the freshman B level. There was an intentional effort by the coaching staff to keep that group together and let them develop at the, there were a number of kids who could have played at the sophomore, even the varsity level on that team, but we wanted to keep them together, let them gel as a group and experience some success, looking towards the future. Next steps, increase focus on strength training and continue to work to build a feeder program that's on par with our girls' basketball feeder program, and Coach Hansa is working very hard on that. We also had Julian Jones did earn NLCC All-Conference honors. He was our starting pipe card the entire year on the varsity team. Our girls' basketball team, also young and competitive. We graduated a lot of seniors the year prior, and so, kind of a steep learning curve. A lot of girls who had not been asked to take on leadership roles or play a lot of time in crucial situations were now asked to do that. They grew and improved as the year went on. Judy Sarablanco, who was one of our athletes of the month, two months ago, I believe, Judy was an NLCC All-Conference selection. Coach Henning made a very intentional effort to increase their focus on strength training this year, and they're now currently also lifting twice a week in the offseason, and continuing to build a strong foundation with our feeder programs. And we're excited for the summer camps and the continued growth of the program. And I expect big things from the girls' basketball program the next three years. Girls' bowling, also another, not first-time head coach, but first-year as a head coach here at Round Lake. Julie Arias, who had been serving as our JV coach, stepped into the head varsity role this year, did a fantastic job. Significant focus on drill work and structured practices, a very intentional increased focus on flexibility, mobility, and strength training that had not really been a part of our bowling program in the past. And we saw that actually help a number of our athletes as they were able to stay strong over the course of long tournaments. Bowling invitationals, those are long days, and if you're not in good shape, your form suffers, and so, that was one of the first and most welcome things that Coach Arias did this year. And I think partially due to that, increased flexibility, mobility, strength work, and focus on drills and fundamentals, you saw consistent improvement over the course of the season. Brooke Laritzen and Miriam Salsedo both earned All-Conference, and Miriam and her sister Claudia also qualified for sectionals. So, very successful first year at the helm for Coach Arias, and we're looking forward to continued development of a feeder program exposing students at our elementary schools to opportunities to bowl and building more excitement for our bowling program in the future there. Competitive cheer. I think really the cheer season this year was a real study in grit for a number of reasons. The cheerleading team at the varsity level had to change either their lineup or their routine. At one point, I wanna say it was six competitions in a row, and they had some athletes that left the program or were injured. And to the kids and Coach Barrett's credit, the scores continued to improve, and they had their best score of the year at the sectional meet. Actually, one of the higher scores they've had since I've been here. I can't say that with absolute certainty, but I remember my eyes opening wide when I saw the score. So, and that's, you know, really all you can control. If you have your best performance at the biggest, you know, the biggest event, the biggest competition, that's a pretty nice job. So, Vanessa Razzo was an All-Conference selection for our cheer team this year, and we're looking forward to an increased focus not only on strength training, but also on tumbling and making consistent tumbling work more available to all of our cheer athletes. Boys' wrestling program had a very successful season, again, under definitely a veteran coach, but first-year head coach, Ken Filas, longtime varsity assistant, stepped into the head varsity role this year, and had a very, very successful season. We had three All-Conference athletes, Grayson Konkial, Alejandro Cordova, and William Cole. We had five all-regional wrestlers, wrestlers who placed at regionals and advanced to the sectional stage of the IHSA State Finals, two champions at regionals. At sectionals at Barrington, we had three athletes advance, meaning they were state qualifiers, and we had two regional, I'm sorry, two sectional champions. I wish Coach Filas were here. He would make sure I get this stat correct. I believe that the last time we had two sectional champions was in the 1980s, I think?
Early 90s, but yeah.
Early 90s.
Late days, early 90s.
So, it had been over 20 years. So, you know, again, you talk about preparation and focus and grit, and to have our best performances at the regional and sectional, and then at the state level, as a credit not only to our student athletes, but also to the coaching staff and getting them ready. As I mentioned, three state qualifiers. Alejandro Cordova was a three-time state qualifier in his career. He and Grayson Konkial both entered the 100 Career Win Club this year, and as you might remember, we celebrated Will Cole as Athlete of the Month last month for being the fourth-place finisher, All-State, the first heavyweight at Round Lake to place that high in school history. So, he also tied the, I'm sorry, the single-season record for wins at 45 wins this year. Next step, continue strengthening our relationship with our feeder programs. We'll be helping McGee host their middle school conference invitational here at the high school next winter. They'll be putting in to host the IESA Regional, and if they get it with our help and support, they'll host that here as well. Continuing to build relationships with the Junior Panthers Elementary School feeder program. And so, that's a next step, and then also working towards fielding a competitive and full lineup. So, basically developing those depth at the varsity level. And, but that's why we're starting young and working on focusing on the feeder programs. Not to be outdone, the girls' wrestling program also had a phenomenal season. Three All-Conference athletes, Ireland McCain, Riley Konkial, and Raven Burnett. It's tougher to earn All-Conference in the NLCC as a female wrestler than it is as a male wrestler, and the reason is, we currently don't have, you need at least five of the eight conference schools to recognize it as a conference sport in order to have a conference tournament. And so, the only way you get right now, the only, oops, the only way you get recognized as an All-Conference, All-Conference Female Wrestler in our conference is by qualifying for the state tournament, which all three of those ladies did. So, we had five athletes earn All-Regional honors and advanced to sectional. I just mentioned the three who were all sectional. Riley Konkial was sectional champion, and so, she and Ireland and Raven all went to state. Riley's a two-time state qualifier. Ireland, we celebrated her last month as Athlete of the Month. Ireland is a three-time state qualifier, and only the, she was by, she beat Alejandro Tuat by about 45 minutes. So, she was the second athlete in school history to be a three-time state qualifier. Alejandro was the third athlete in school history. So, next steps, hopefully, recognition as an NLCC conference sport. The program, the wrestling program is growing at other schools in our conference, girls' wrestling is, like it has grown here. The potential, hopefully, for a separate coaching staff, and, you know, just continue to encourage the growth of the sport at the youth level. We'll finish with a few celebrations, and then I'll take any questions that you have. So, Girls' Flag Football was approved by the IHSA as an official sport. They will debut this August, and the first-ever state finals for Girls' Flag Football will be held on October 18th and 19th. Our principal, Mr. Peterson, was a member of the IHSA Committee to plan for the official adoption of Girls' Flag Football as an IHSA sport. Our team this past fall finished second in the Lake County Conference, which we participated in. There were not enough NLCC schools that were offering Girls' Flag Football last year. I'm happy to report that every school in our conference will be offering Girls' Flag Football next year. And actually, I am the resource athletic director for Girls' Flag Football for the conference. So, and as I mentioned, it's been adopted as an official sport for 2024. We had 23 girls compete on our flag football team last fall, and interest surveys that Coach Henick has sent out suggests that that number will grow significantly this coming fall, so we're excited for that. I mentioned, we, oh, no, I didn't mention, I mentioned how well we did at regionals. I didn't mention that we hosted it. So, we hosted one of the inaugural IHSA Girls' Wrestling Regionals this year. I like to say that we hosted the first because I checked Track Wrestling, and we actually finished ours first. So, we were forevermore the host of the first-ever IHSA Girls' Wrestling Regional. That was the last weekend in January, and our girls had a top-10 finish as a team. I mentioned five of our athletes advanced to sectionals. And the picture over there on the right, we had some very special and helpful volunteers. President Francisco was one of our timer and towel guys one day, and he was security and others. So, appreciate the service leadership there. And just again, continuing with our senior night celebrations, and each team puts their own spin on it, but as you can see with the use of the, our new media backdrops, we try and set a certain standard of how we're gonna celebrate all of those kids. Janet Walsh in my office does a fantastic job designing the senior posters, and which the athletes get to take home. I think the parents are more excited about those than the kids, but it's still a nice touch that, you know, we're really proud of. And continuing with our Panther Pride Initiative, you can see about halfway through the winter, we switched to a new shirt that is all-school colors. The kids really seemed to like the new shirts, so that's good. And again, I mentioned our academic All-Conference athletes from the winter. I wanted to make sure that we gave those eight individuals a special individual shout-out here. So, these are varsity athletes who are at least a sophomore and maintained a 3.5 or higher cumulative grade point average during their season. So, Justice Bills, Jordan Collimore, Emily Janis, Grayson Konkial, Riley Konkial, Kaylee Skoronsky, Miriam Salsedo, and Claudia Salsedo. So, congratulations to them. And I will take any questions that you have.
I have one question regarding competitive cheer. When you talk about the increased focus on tumbling, could you maybe provide more detail? Like, because I know tumbling's expensive.
So, we're, yes, it is. We are looking at creative ways to fund it, so that, one, if we can commit a certain number of athletes to a certain number of sessions, we'll get a price break. Two, if we're able to pay for it, either out of the athletic budget, the cheerleading activity budget, or a combination of the two, the coach can require it. Right now, it's strongly suggested, but there's travel considerations, as you mentioned, cost considerations. Cheer is a very expensive sport all around. So, we're trying to lessen that burden on our athletes and their families. And then, at the same time, it will allow us to raise the level of expectation so that they can be the best possible version of themselves as a competitive cheerleader, and hopefully, it'll translate to higher scores and better performances.
Right, right, yeah. Well-aware how expensive competitive cheer is. My daughter did it since she was five, but I know, again, for us in competitive cheer for Round Lake, where our score suffers because we have no tumbling. And, you know, we haven't honestly had tumbling since my daughter was here. But again, she did competitive cheer, so she brought that here. But we have, the tumbling was never always required because, again, cost consideration. It is very expensive. I'm just hoping that we can bring that to the students so they can have that experience, but brings it to the teams when they go to compete. Our sectional is tough.
Yeah, it's kind of a murderer's row.
Okay, you said it, not me.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, well, routinely, more than half of our conference qualifies for state and cheer.
Oh, yeah.
And we see a lot of them at the sectional, and yeah, it's extremely competitive. I would argue competitive cheerleading and boys' soccer are probably the two most competitive sports in our conference.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we've got our work cut out for us, but Coach Barrett has been speaking to a number of people she knows in the cheerleading community, and we're looking for the best possible fit where I can work with transportation to provide a bus to and from tumbling sessions, and if we can budget to absorb the cost of that for the athletes, then it can become a required part of our practice regimen.
Okay. I mean, that's good to hear, because I think, I think that's what has to happen, because again, I know the cost, and even, like you said, transportation, it's sometimes two hours at night, and it's from either six to eight or seven to nine, and, you know, parents, everybody has other things to do as well, and transportation is another component of it as well.
Yeah, we're not there yet, but we're trying to think outside the box and be creative with our solutions so we can give our kids the best possible experience and, you know, try and create a competitive advantage for them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'll jump in on this one. Any idea with the, whether you have a handle on it or not, just, or ballpark guess, the 19 or so student athletes that we dipped in the winter total number between 2022 and '23 and '23, '24, is there other sport factors that we may run into? Any idea what caused that dip? Because we see significant increases in both the fall and the spring numbers. So, is there something we're not offering?
That's a good question. The short answer is, I don't know yet. I haven't done a deep dive into that data. I will say that you have to, please keep in mind, the fall and spring, we've added sports to both of those, and so, that accounts for some. We added flag football in the fall, we added boys' volleyball in the spring, and so, that's account, because a lot of those athletes were kids, not all of them, but a lot of them were kids that weren't playing a fall or a spring sport at that time. So, and we, winter is the season where we offer the fewest number of sports. But we'll be sending out our, every two years, we send out an interest survey to the entire student body about, you know, reasons they may not participate, including are there sports that you would do that we don't currently offer, right? Two of those that I'm interested in seeing the data for moving forward are winter sports, and that's competitive dance and boys' bowling. So, I can take a deeper look, a deeper dive into the data for the winter numbers for this year. And again, it's a little bit lower than it was last year, but it's still higher than it was two years ago. So, I wouldn't worry too much about it just yet, but I can look at that and see. I think it speaks more to the growth in the fall and the spring, but we're always looking to provide as many opportunities as we can for our kids.
Yeah, and to your, to your point, both fall and spring have basically take-all sports between cross-country and track, where there's, everybody's welcome and wants, we want them there. So, thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so very much. All right, next up, we are going to go to the after-action review process, and I am not sure who I'm kicking this over to. That would be Ms. Bennett.
So, this board agenda item is in response to a request that was made following one of the national conferences. I think, Mr. Jewett, you attended one recently where they were speaking about a response to and preparation for, is mainly safety concerns at a school district. So, we're just gonna spend a few minutes today and review the process that we use in district here. So, we utilize an after-action review process in a variety of situations, most often following a safety incident, sometimes with procedural setbacks, or any new implementations that we might have in district that perhaps maybe didn't start off the way that we had intended. So, we can use this process to reflect. Some of the examples listed here that we used this process for this year were, at the start of the year, we had some transportation and registration connection issues right at the launch of the school year, so we did work through this process for that. We did have a safety incident back in the fall that I'm sure we all remember. We used that, this process for that as well. And then, most recently, the bomb threats that we had at Round Lake Middle School and McGee. So, just to quote here, the importance of reflection and utilizing that to improve our practices. And this is the structure of our process here in District 116. So, first step is really identifying the date or dates, location, and times of the incidents that, or situation that we're responding to. The second is really noting what the description of the incident was, what our response to the incident or incidents were, which supporting departments were involved, and different agencies that we involved, what went well, and also what challenges we encountered throughout the process. Always the noted areas for improvement, and then follow-up steps, and who's responsible for what, as well as timelines. So, what we'll walk you through next is the example of the most recent situation that we dealt with, probably about six weeks ago now, which were the bomb threats at Round Lake Middle and McGee. So, oh, well, here's our date, February 21st is when it happened. We had a call that started at Round Lake Middle, and then a follow-up call at McGee that same day. That was the description, I think we already reviewed, and then our response, immediately we placed our building into hold, utilizing our Raptor safety system. 911 was contacted. Students and staff were eventually evacuated. We brought in an explosive search dog for one of our buildings from the Navy Base, and we did, we conducted the full school searches at Round Lake Middle, Indian Hill, since it's attached, and also McGee Middle School. Supporting departments, safety obviously was involved right off the bat. Teaching and learning involved to support at both buildings and food service. Our outside agency supports were 911 dispatch, of course. The Round Lake Heights Beach and Round Lake Police Departments were all helpful, very helpful that day. The Greater Round Lake Fire Department and the US Navy for the dog. Just some areas to reference, I won't read them all, you can see them here, but what went well, I think, number one, staff and students, their response to this was just beautiful. They just remained very calm, very positive throughout the few-hour process that we experienced that day. The use of Raptor, obviously, that's been a great tool in district. I think we're a little bit predisposed to the sound that comes across our phone every time we have a drill or an actual incident. So, it's very quick for all of our staff to access what's happening in each of our buildings. Let's see, bus drivers, I just want to point out how quickly they came together to respond that day in our dismissal times at those three buildings. Let's see, access to the school resource officer on Lake Heights at Round Lake Middle School, being on-site, it was an immediate response, and that was where our first call came in that day. And as you know, we're working through the upgrade of our PA systems across the district. So, Indian Hill especially, since their system was really not great at the beginning of this year, having that in place was extremely helpful. Some of the challenges that we encountered, we have had Round Lake Middle and Indian Hill tied together on the Raptor alert, so the communication that came through was a little bit confusing because it came through on one building, the communication of it to both, but they weren't quite sure what was happening between the two buildings. So, we were able to work through that process. A bit of a delay at Round Lake Middle School as we were waiting for the dog to come from the Navy Base. This happened, unfortunately, during our lunch periods in some cases, so that was definitely a situation. And then some traffic flow. Who's responsible for kind of getting that rolling at each of the buildings, the communication between our district and the police departments that we're supporting? So, those were some of the things that we experienced that. some of the things that we experienced that day. Uh, noted areas for improvement, so we have a list here. Um, I think one of the most important things as we came together as a group was establishing a clear incident command system. Really defining who's responsible for what. It was all hands on deck that day, as it always is, but it would have been and will be very helpful in the future to know what I or what what Kurt or Eric or anybody else who's supporting onsite on those days. Uh, we know what we're responsible for, and if we're not available, who's our backup? So I just want to call out some of these again, you can see them. Um, sample scripts for the front office, it's not every day we get these kind of phone calls, thankfully. But when we do, we want to be sure that our staff is um, knowing what to record when those types of calls come forward. Um, and then weather was great that day, but if it wasn't, what would we have done? So the process would have looked a little bit different. So those are all things that we talk about through that process. And then the follow-up steps that we identified, uh, really made connected to that incident command system. Our goal is to have all of our administrators trained um, over the summer, so working through the details on that uh, on NIMs training, and that really is establishing roles and responsibilities in times of crisis. Um, debriefing with external partners, Cory Fink was able to do that, so reaching out to our police departments, the fire department from their perspective, what went well, what needed improvement, so that communication was really important and very helpful. There's some ordering of supplies, like the megaphone that you saw in a prior slide, that would just be helpful outside. Um, making mass calls, like we're going to be dismissing in this area or restrooms are available over here. Um, and then revisiting the evacuation and relocation procedures in time of bad weather again. So if weather is bad, like count on that and what will, how will we respond in the future? And then um really documenting any of these necessary changes into our safety plan for next year as we head into the new school year. So that that's just an example of how we ran through that after-action review process uh, for this situation. Um, and I think just looking for some feedback on that process and Mr. Jewett, I know what you saw there may look a little bit differently than what we're describing today, but just your feedback on how that compares or if you have any recommendations on how we want to move forward or any questions that you may have.
Uh, really only basically two pieces, one, I'm really grateful that we have a process. So having the process of going through will help us to improve on a regular basis. So and then the second piece would be, um, are there resources that we should be tapping into? To be thinking about things we're not, we're not aware of within our own, so for instance, are these the best practices? Um, that we're instituting, so it's, that would be the only um, upgrade I'm seeing out of this, but nice job.
I I do have a question. I'll let you finish writing. Um, just when I look at this, the this after-action process and I look from you know, like step one, which is the occurrence itself until when you go to eight, which is follow steps with responsibilities and parties. What what's that life cycle like? Like what do we have? What's your timeline? Because otherwise, if you just get to eight and there's no timeline of when these need to be implemented or put into place, then the after-action process didn't really happen.
Sure, yes, um, there's, there's always timelines associated it with that process and it really depends on what the situation is, so the registration, transportation one that we did earlier in the year. There were some things that we could do upfront and planning for this next registration process. But also some things that we wouldn't necessarily know until we launched, so making sure that we're monitoring that those issues are not happening right off the bat as we opened registration this year. Um, so that timeframe is is different, but Dr. Eppcar wrote that into his plan for this year, um, for registration planning for this um, situation that we're sharing today from February. Um, some of those were right away, so and we talked about that through the process when we got everybody together. Um, who who was responsible, most of those spelling on Cory, of course, but um some of those things have happened already, but then we're also planning for the training for the NIMs, training for administrators for this coming summer. So um, it really depends, but we are monitoring all the the actions that are required from that that pro- that review process and they all look different.
But so do you say like, like this incident occurred, what was it, February twenty-first? To start the after-action process, when did that happen? Like on February twenty-second or was it the twenty-third? Like when does the actual start of this after-action review process? So the incident occurs, that's obviously step one, but when do you start? Like did it take till March first? You know, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
No, it was that week. I I can't, I can't save it. I think maybe it was Friday that week, I I have to double check. Uh, but with the registration process, we knew we were, like, we had to get things corrected like yesterday. So we didn't meet on that until maybe a week after we got through that entire process to um, really analyze where where the conflicts were.
And I would say the, if it's safety related, there's almost like two phases, it's the immediate issue. We don't actually start solving more of the long-term process until we know the immediacy has been taken care of. Um, that might be the next day, it might be two days, when we had the incident that prompted us to close school earlier, that was not a next-day thing, we were literally responding non-stop for a day and a half to new information we had. But then, I think closer to the second day at the end, we literally brought everybody in and had to button it up. Went through this process so that if it happened like the next week, we would do it some things different. So um, we try to do it as quickly as possible, safety ones are more of a priority, but you can't be in both lanes, we had a, you know, we have a bandwidth issue, so we're trying to address the immediacy of the safety and the staff and making sure we're communicating effectively. Um, and good or bad, right or wrong, I mean, these things, we go through this process every time, we learn. And then we try to implement it better the next time, and then we go through it again and learn and just keep getting better, so.
Yeah, and I know it's gonna be be different for all of them, that's why I kind of asked that life cycle question because there also has to be a a life cycle to each after action, because otherwise it could be open-ended or never addressed as well. If if we don't put a life cycle on it.
One other thing I was thinking is, I'm assuming, but if you could just speak a little bit to how the learning from this will apply to something else, so for instance, evacuating the students in poor weather could happen in other situations, so how are those being? How's that serving multiple situations?
Well, I think uh, one example we can use is McGee, so when they evacuated, they went outside, but immediately, Dr. King started speaking with Cory about a a better location for their evacuation and relocation. So now they're set to go down to the high school and it really could be any type of evacuation need for the building, not something like so safety-related. Um, so the, that's an example of how that could, um, that new plan for relocating the students happened just because of the situation and maybe that conversation wouldn't have happened until later on when we're really talking about maybe new relocation centers for the schools heading into next year.
As someone who's part of these after actions with other types of crisis situations, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work and diligence you guys are putting into it, because I know what goes into them. And I know they take quite a bit, and I know that you guys do circle back to stuff. Um, so yeah, I appreciate that. Um, one thing that I'm gonna throw out there, which is actually something that we'll come to at our next board meeting, um, I went to a really awesome conference. Um, and one of the things that was really cool that might wind up something that you guys think about incorporating was a session I went to was on incorporating the needs of students and staff with disabilities into the emergency operations plans, because I know a lot of times we, like, some of the students I work with, we've we think we got it, and then like sometimes it's like, oh, this somebody new who came to the district and we didn't think about adding their unique issue in, so just, you know, a thought, but I got some cool stuff, I could, I'll shoot your guys' way from it. No, it's just one of the, a- and after I came back from the conference, I already sat down with my boss and I said, look dude, we gotta redo some stuff, so I'm already making trouble all over the place, but just, you know, it's a cool thing. It's just, and I'm sure we already got a lot of it done.
I I think there, generally speaking, we have it in our plan, but do we do um, it's good of a job building specifically and planning for individual students, I think that is a really good point that we'll build in.
And I work with special education students, I don't even think about it, I write plans, so, yeah, it's a, it's, it was a great thing to go to.
I just want to shout out you guys for that whole situation, because um, as you know, I have several children in the district and while I know it was inconvenience for them, they, you know, the the food was an issue, we identified some stuff that we need to improve on. Never was there a point in my time, um, because I was at a town where I was concerned my child might be in danger. Like I knew you guys would take care of it, they would, she would be okay, so I just want to call you guys out and thank you for that, because that's a priority for you guys and I know it is, and I appreciate it as a parent.
Additional questions? Thank you very much. All right, next up is the secondary cell phone procedure, and I think this one is Dr. Eppcar. That didn't sound good, but we'll work with that. So just before Dr. Eppcar is gone, I'm I'm guessing this is where the board will be putting their phones in right before every meeting?
Only if you say so. Right, I did come with props tonight. So we wanted to bring before you our secondary cell phone procedures. Um, Mr. Peterson isn't here tonight, but he did bring this to me and then um, I've worked to bring it to fruition. But as we began this process, we looked at current practice. So we looked at Grant High School, who has a similar cell phone policy as the one I'm going to present tonight. Lake Santioch does not have a cell phone policy. Graveslake North and Central, their cell phones must be turned off and in lockers. Wakanda does not have a cell phone policy, and Warren Township has a similar cell phone policy to the policy I'm gonna present tonight. So as we started this process, we met with a representative representative committee of Earl leadership, teachers, uh, related service staff and really worked through this process in a collaborative manner. And this policy or these procedures do relate to strategic plan connections theme C. So social emotional development. So as we've looked at this process, we wanted to really turn over every stone to ensure that we were removing any obstacles to our student achievement. So cell phones in the classroom pose a significant source of distraction. So the research behind this, um, researchers provided teachers with a process where they provided students with one point each day they submitted their cell phones prior to class. Over the course of the semester, those points represented three percent of the student's grade. At the end of the semester, students who submitted their cell phones prior to the the class beginning received one letter grade higher than those students who did not participate. Research also shows that cell phones in the classroom have a negative impact on students' attention, engagement and overall performance. In another study, students were asked to drop their cell phones into a clear bin at the beginning of each class. Those students who did drop their phones into that uh, clear container performed significantly better than those students who did not. So as data was analyzed, performance on high-stakes testing increased following cell phone bans, especially for those students who are the lowest performing. And then research also indicates that students perform significantly better if their cell phones are in another room, so in another research study, they had three groups. Those students who had their phones in view on their desk, students who had their phones out of view in the same room, and then students whose phones were in another room, they could not see the phones. And those students who had their cell phones in another room performed significantly better. So as we started this process, we looked at research recommendations and Hannover Research was a great resource as we did this. So recommendations were to include stakeholders in the policy development. Identify a middle ground process so there was regulated use of the cell phone, not sort of all or nothing. And then make sure that the enforcement and consequences for violation of this policy were clearly communicated. So as we look at this plan, middle school students are not permitted to use their cell phone during instructional time. So their cell phones have to be kept in their locker and off. Now, students can use their cell phone before school, during lunch and after school, so that kind of goes in line with regulated use of the phone. And then in the event of emergency, provisions can be made for students to contact their parents or guardians. And also student communication needs will be considered on a case-by-case basis. For example, if a student's glucose level is monitored by their phone, they can have their phone. If students have um, hearing deficits and they use their cell phone to modulate their amplification for hearing, they can have their phones. Also, kind of on a case-by-case basis, if they work with their social worker, there's a traumatic event going on at home. In those situations, students could have a- access to their phones. So if a middle school student violates the cell phone or headphone procedure, then um, the the device would be taken to the main office, so at the middle school level, there would be one of these boxes in each main office, and that's where the cell phone will go. And students can get their cell phones back at the end of the day. If the student refuses to adhere to the policy or can or um, repeatedly violates the policy, then um, they would be removed from class and escorted to the dean's office. Okay, so high school students are a little different, we we've developed these procedures to be developmentally appropriate. So high school students are not permitted to use their cell phones during instructional time unless explicitly indicated by their instructor. So it's a little different, rather than being in their locker, cell phones must be out of sight during instructional time. Students may use their phones during non-instructional time, before school, passing periods, lunch and after school. Same provisions for emergencies, same provisions for uh, extenuating circumstances at the high school level. So if a high school student violates the cell phone policy, they're first asked to put their device away. The second time they violate the policy, their cell phone will go in this box for the remainder of the period. So it's a little different than middle school, each classroom will have a box like this. So if a student violates the procedures um, repeatedly, they will be taken to the student services office. And consequences may um, include warnings, parent meetings, um, detention or other appropriate means. So we did make a delineation between headphones um, and earbuds and cell phones. So students are not permitted to use headphones or earbuds um, during instructional time unless allowed by their teacher. Um, this is at that, the high school level, if headphones or earbuds are allowed, they're expected to be kept at an appropriate volume. And we also want appropriate content to be played, so no explicit music, no explicit videos on school grounds. So if we, as we have developed this process, we initially brought this process to the community engagement committee. We then took it to the uh, parent advisory committee, they gave us really good feedback. And then we brought that feedback back to the community engagement committee. And then um, we will eventually take this to secondary staff and then communicate this out to parents um, most likely through PE classes at the secondary level. Any questions?
How does this differ from the current policy?
So currently, cell phones are expected to be turned off and out of sight. So this gives uh, more parameters, um, more um, delineation of consequences and a means to secure the device while the device is not able to be a distraction during the classroom.
How much are the boxes?
I wanna say they're sixty-eight dollars.
I knew I asked that question when we presented it to community engagement, how much the boxes were and whose budget they were coming out of.
So they're sixty-eight dollars and we've worked with, uh, teaching and learning for those to come out of teaching and learning funds.
What's the, okay, so I work in a school. You know where I'm going with this. So what happens if Johnny or Suzie doesn't, refuses to put their phone in the box? It's my phone, you can't have it. You know what?
That's a good question. We do expect a period of transition. Um, overall, our students are very good at, um, working with us and following the rules, um, as indicated. But in that case, if it becomes, um, some type of power struggle, then a safety assistant will be called to escort that student to student services.
The other thing is you hit it on the head. The only way this is gonna be effective is if we enforce it. So our kids, I like to call it like, like it's reestablishing norms. That's what we're gonna have to do. Um, very similar, there were other things that, you know, eleven years ago, I think when I came, there was, it was, this, this high school's awesome. But it was a little bit loose in terms of kids getting to class on time. And we had to, we had to be intentional about creating the expectations, commuting the expect, communicating them and then enforcement. Dr. Apgar, the team, they are, they're all aware this will only be as good as we enforce it and that includes having our teachers. We can't be everywhere all the time, but that includes our teachers being mindful of mi- managing this in a respectful way and following the protocols we set up.
And third element to that is leading by example.
A hundred percent.
I agree. Another important piece is we're very fortunate to have a, uh, very, uh, capable, very strong communications department is working with Ms. LeBlanc and Heather to communicate out, uh, these new procedures early and often.
If there is like an allegation of some sort that the teacher is misusing this, do the children have like an option to like escalate it in any way, shape or form? Is there like a, a, a way that they can make complaint of some sort if they feel like it's being misused? Cause I feel like that's gonna come up.
Yes, at any time, students can bring their concerns to, um, other teachers, if they have a relationship with a teacher, social worker, counselor, psychologist, and even the student services office. They can go down and talk to their dean or Mr. Renali.
To be clear, I'm in favor of this. Just, I just wanted to point that out, just to avoid any possible miscommunications.
Thank you.
And how will we communicate this to our guest teachers, this new policy, and then the use of those boxes?
That's a very good question. Um, we'll develop, um, a note for those, um, for those guest teachers for like a quick overview, um, of what the policy is and how it's enforced. But we'll share that information with our guest teachers.
And we could do that through the orientation as well, correct? When we onboard them?
Yes, we definitely can.
And then how to use the box? Okay. And so when do you, um, are you talking about this going, being implemented for the next school year or how soon? Do you, is this to be in effect?
Yes, we plan to implement this for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Okay. So there's plenty of time to get communication out to staff, students and families.
Absolutely. We also intend to make amendments to our student handbook to reflect these procedures. And also for the elementary level, at the elementary level, students cannot have cellphones, cannot use cellphones. And by and large, they don't. The only time we see student cellphone use at the elementary level, it's predominantly fifth grade students on the bus.
Okay.
I will just make one point, uh, one thing that Ms. Lee and I saw uh, when we were in New Orleans with the NSBA is, uh, individualized cases. Basically kinda like those little lock boxes, but just like a sleeve that the phone drops in. And then the, the teacher has the little magnetic key that locks it, that would put that, and so the student doesn't actually give up possession. It just goes into the sleeve. Basically the same things that you have to put your phones in if you wanna go to a Taylor Swift concert anymore. Um, so those kinds of ideas, uh, keeping an eye on it, uh, I think the brand name on it was Yonder or something like that. Um, but just again, keeping a concept of that. Uh, because again, I definitely understand what we're saying when it comes to, to the distraction. Um, but I do wonder if the, the entire process may be more of a distraction than the distraction that we're currently having. So more to come. Look forward to seeing how this plays out.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. Um, I know that other schools in some cases do use those sleeves that the phones drop in. But just like any procedures that we want to implement, we will monitor them and evaluate them as we go along and then make adjustments as needed. Thank you for that feedback.
Sorry, one, one thought that I had, um, since it's gonna be like more of a new procedure policy signage for the kids in the building and that way, even if it's a new sub, it's everywhere. So it's just, it's the new way, guys. It's all of our new signage. It's, you know, this is step one is this, step two is this, step three is the box. Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you for bringing that up. We'll definitely consider that. Yes.
Also just a quick question as far as parental concerns, because I do believe that there will be some. Are we directing those parents to the principals of the school? Is there a person that we should have them contact for questions and concerns?
I think it depends. If it's maybe right now, they're welcome to contact myself or Brian Peterson. If it's ongoing throughout the school year and it's specific to a situation at the high school, I would say Brian Peterson or, uh, building leadership.
So they would lose the phone for the hour and then receive it at the end of class, to be clear?
Correct, yes.
Any additional questions? All right, look forward to hearing more as we implement and get the continuing feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Dr. Kibbins and we have our fiscal twenty-five. That's right, we have moved on to twenty-five for our budget assumptions.
Beer, we've moved on to fiscal twenty-five. Physically, we're still in fiscal twenty-four. Um, the fiscal twenty-five projected budget assumptions that you have in front of you this evening, um, would just like to, um, certainly, uh, recognize that, uh, we honor and support that some of the items on here are pending Board of Education approval this evening. However, to give you the most current and up-to-date information, that's why those things are listed. So we don't want you to think that we don't understand and respect that. It's very clear. We, we, uh, have listed those as such, but I will call those out as well. Um, looking at the items that are here this evening, there are a couple of highlights that are new from the previous, uh, assumption sheet that was listed, uh, specifically looking at number eight. Uh, transfer funds from fiscal twenty-four to fiscal twenty-five. That dollar amount has a change and it been adjusted to one million, one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That includes the support of the, uh, purchase of the K-eight uh, benchmark language arts curriculum, K-eight I-ready assessment suite, K-five I-ready math curriculum as well, which there's a component there that will be presented later this evening and is pending Board of Education approval. Uh, line item number nineteen, postage machine lease, listed as fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We are adding an additional postage machine to our district, which is where you're seeing the increase. Um, and again, that item as well is reflected as, um, pending Board of Education approval this evening on that lease. Uh, moving down to line fifty, one point oh increase, math teacher, Runlake High School. Staff needing to lower foundations and prep classes, uh, more to come in that specific area. Uh, line fifty-one, six point zero coaching stipends. Uh, coaches in the areas of girls' flag football, two in the area of girls' wrestling and one for boys volleyball. Line fifty-seven, reading curriculum adoption, eight hundred twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is the offset, that's the expense for we, where we added the transfer funds from last year into this year to support that curriculum adoption. And again, that is pending Board of Education approval this evening. Line fifty-nine, two additional drivers, education vehicles. We've recognized the need of our students and how they do receive and need that service of behind the wheel, um, training and support, um, here in the district. So we are increasing, uh, two additional vehicles. And then, uh, finally, line sixty, a facilities groundkeeper floater specifically for the high school area here and also supporting, uh, district when not in need here at the, at the, uh, high school level. Again, uh, going to be approved at the Board of Education meeting April fifteenth later on in the agenda. So with those pending items that are listed, um, in addition to some transfer items that are new, coupled with the fact that we have a flat EBF, we do not know what our funding will be for next year. We do have a positive budget picture of two million, five hundred six thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions or need for clarification?
I was just gonna reiterate, as Dr. Kibbins mentioned, this was at the finance committee meeting. So as she mentioned, there are some, and we'll go into greater detail when those items come up on the agenda, that are, um, asking for board approval.
Any additional concerns, questions, clarifications? Hearing none. Thank you very much. All right, next up, I believe we've got the recycle of obsolete technology equipment. And I think it's Mr. Mondrigan that'll be presenting to us this evening.
Hello. All right, uh, so, uh, consistent with previous practice, the technology innovation department would like to inform the board of our latest obsolete technology recycling efforts. Uh, typically our obsolete equipment has no value. However, in this case, the Apple products listed in table one dot one have current market value. Our department has secured quotes from three of our partners and will move forward with the highest proposal. Uh, those prices are reflected on table one dot one. Since this technology could have additional value to our staff, our department will work with the business office to offer this specific technology for sale to our staff first at the same prices listed. This will occur before the end of the school year. Any equipment that remains after our staff has had an opportunity to purchase will be provided to Second Life Mac prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Any questions?
I assumed, uh, we're gonna have a communication structure kind of like the, the buyback process that we have that we've done in the past where, when we had the excess iPads for buybacks in order to be able to offer it out to the staff and, and staff and administration accordingly?
Correct. Yep. Um, actually, with the buyback, I got a lot of staff emailing me about the opportunity to buy iPads themselves. Uh, and I did say that, uh, this time we're not selling iPads, but if there's anything that changes, I will send our communication. So yes, we'll communicate to staff.
Yeah, definitely thinking you're gonna have some interest in, in purchasing some iMacs, so. Any additional questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Uh, just real quick separately, uh, uh, it was mentioned that there was a question about the iPad buyback metrics, uh, for the school year. So I just wanted to cover those real quick. Uh, the program went live, uh, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. There has been communication that has gone out to the families of students who are eligible to partake in this program. Those, uh, families include, uh, families who have students in grades fourth, eighth and twelfth. And they can purchase a seventh generation iPad. Uh, there have been four separate communication reminders and the opting window has ended. It was this past Friday. The deadline to pay in full is next week, Friday, April nineteenth. Uh, fourth grade had a total of four hundred and fifty students eligible to buy their device. Uh, out of those four fifty, seventy-seven have opted in to purchase a device. That's seventeen percent. For eighth grade, it was five hundred and three students. Out of those, sixty-five have opted in at thirteen percent. And for twelfth grade is, uh, five hundred and twenty-nine students had the opportunity. Uh, out of those, it's, uh, eighty-two have opted in to buy the device with, uh, sixteen percent. Uh, keep in mind, any devices that are not purchased will be used for loaners or spares in the buildings. Any questions on that?
So I, I, I had asked for that, uh, that data, knowing that we had just started the uh, iPad buyback opportunity for our fourth and eighth and twelfth graders. Trying to see what that percentage is and is it something that we need to revisit and how we offer and use and how we implement this program? Trying to see what those numbers were. I guess really the next step is to see what were our percentages last year compared to this year? So that maybe we need to revisit how we do this buyback program.
I can definitely get those numbers.
Okay. So I think now we have, we've accumulated enough data. I know this is, you know, still fairly new to the district, the iPad buyback program. But I think now we should have been able to accumulate enough data that we can really, uh, take a look at how this program is working. Not just for the district, but for the families.
Would it be with the intent of trying to increase the amount that it end up getting bought back or? Cause I would think that eighty percent or whatever that's not getting bought back is actually being utilized well because it's being used, you know, for the backups and so on and so forth.
Well, they're not using that eighty percent for backups. They keep a smaller pers- much smaller percentage. The rest we're selling.
The, right, the rest we end up doing the, the, selling it off for the spare parts kinda thing or to the recycling.
Right. So is there something we could do different with the implementation of iPads to increase it or do we front the cro- the cost somewhere? That then you just take it at the end of your fourth, eighth or twelfth grade year?
Right.
So you don't have to pay for it.
Cause I'm sure, I'm sure that the, the recycling dollar that we get on, on those when we do end up turning them in is lower than that, so.
Right.
How do we balance it?
Exactly. As a parent of two seniors who have the option of buying them back, I bought one back and that would be for my use because my children going to college need actual computers, not iPads. So I think that's what you're partly seeing is these kids going off to school aren't gonna use an iPad. They need actual computers.
Right, but not all our students go off to college either.
So I was under a different impression. I was under impression the fourth, eighth and twelfth are offered because they're being u- because it's not being used as a buyback to staff or to any other student or families, that product, because it needs to be used for other things, but that's not correct.
Well, some of them are, but not all of them. So.
What's Hermes, can you answer that?
Yeah, so this is the third year we've done this, or we're doing this. Uh, this year, um, seven gen iPads are the ones up for sale. And pretty much what we don't end up selling to students, we're gonna retain. We're not gonna sell to staff and we're not gonna sell off to Second Life Mac, I don't think, just because we have a high need of loaners. Our entire loaner fleet, which is three hundred and eighty iPads at this moment, is, uh, sixth generation iPads, which are definitely obsolete. And we are gonna use these seven gens to replace, uh, all of them. Uh, and, uh, based on the numbers, it's not many that are gonna get bought, but, uh, we can definitely find other uses for, uh, the remaining seven gens that we get, uh, long-term sub iPads, Raptor iPads. These are all like fifth or sixth gen iPads. We can definitely use these too.
So it does sound like for this cycle, it's in line with what Mr. Judd is saying.
Yes. Uh, last year and the year prior, we were selling six gens. Uh, one, one year was like, I think eighty dollars and it was forty-nine. Uh, now they're but up to eighty-four dollars because we're selling seven gens. Uh, I can say for those, we had so many because we bought them for three years, the sixth generation iPads and, um, I would like to sell some of those off, but not, uh, I don't think to staff because they're so old. I was talking to them about that one. But, uh, definitely, uh, try to get rid of that fleet just because it's obsolete and no one can really use it. And those, uh, like last year, we kept some, but we also got rid of some. About six gens.
So yeah, it depends on the cycle of, of what generation, when it reaches the fourth, eighth and twelfth grade year. But I still think it gives us an opportunity to review the program and that's the data and that's the information we need then. Now, like you said, three years, obviously the first and second year. It was two really new, we didn't really have enough data, but going into the third year. It was two really new, we didn't really have enough data, but going into the third year with these percentages, like, you know, you said fourth grade, there was four hundred and fifty, is that what you said?
Correct.
And you know, so what was that compared to to last year? And I know you don't have that information right now, but I I think it's data that we should review to see if this program is really being utilized as it as we should.
Well, it was fifteen to sixteen, seventeen percent across the board, is that what it was roughly? Yeah, okay, so roughly flat, four, eight, and twelve?
Uh they range from thirteen percent to seventeen percent across grade levels.
Seventeen, thirteen, and sixteen respectively, fourth, eighth, and twelfth.
Any additional?
But I'm just curious what you the other board thought.
Yeah, any additional comments, concerns, feedback?
No, I would agree with, we need to reevaluate that, the bit of being that flat across the three levels, I wonder if there's yeah, if anything's gonna pop out, because then it like comes to my head right now, like what use would a fourth grader have or an eighth grader? If they're gonna get another one anyway. And keep, you know what I'm saying? Why would they want, why would they wanna spare one at home?
Right, maybe we just revamp how we offer it, maybe we just don't do fourth, eighth, and twelfth, maybe at the end of the year, we just offer a buyback.
Right, exactly.
Sell, whatever, maybe we just need to look at the program itself, we don't have to do fourth, eighth, and twelfth.
Cause I I do, I do know that I was approached by families that were interested in it, but they didn't have kids in those in those ages. Um so then they would have been interested in purchasing uh purchasing devices.
I'm just saying, because it doesn't look like the these respective grades are completely utilizing that opportunity, but like you said, there's other families in the district that maybe want to buy them, but I don't have a fourth grader, I don't have a twelfth or eighth grader, so it's not an opportunity coming to me as a as a family in this district, maybe we can open it up.
So what I'm thinking is maybe now that we're getting data and that fifteen to seventeen percent or whatever, we can pick a number, right? So we need, so maybe it's, okay, this method that we've been using captures seventeen percent, but we really need to utilize about forty percent through the next cycle that we'll be through for some reason. For instance, if all of them were bought for this cycle, that would have been a negative because there wouldn't have been enough for loaners.
Sure, right.
So there's almost, so it's almost now starting to get data to your point.
Right.
So now we can tweak the program as needed to make sure that we are maximizing the value of them.
Right, how do we maximize the sales of it while while keeping the ones that we need in order to do it? And maybe that's as simple as we we continue to try and find that that sweet spot, but we pull out the the numbers that we need for the backup fleet and they're pulled out right away. And then now there's X number that are available, you're not necessarily guaranteed you're getting your piece, your machine you're in line.
Right, that's what I'm saying, now is the perfect opportunity. This is our third year, now we have data to evaluate and make some decisions.
So we'll bring that, when uh Mr. Cozett comes back, we'll bring that again for a full board discussion item for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
All right, next up is our April twenty twenty-four strategic plan monthly update.
Just um wanted to call out a couple things of note, uh we are well into the process of, I mean, it's signa- it is going to be very, very busy for Dr. Lamping and the team. And the I'm looking at them because the move is, we're already packing to to facilitate everything. Um well on schedule with the early childhood construction project, uh the footings have been poured. Interior walls are being framed, believe it or not, and then just wanted to recognize Lisa, Dr. Stefan and the team. Um I see Sarah here and Liz is back there. Maybe Chrissy, it's hard to see around the corner there, but we hosted a CBE event, uh we had representatives from the Chicago Public School System in the ISBE and just another example of some good work that we're doing. Having, you know, uh CPS and state reps coming to see what we're doing is positive, so. Those are the three, and then obviously a little bit later, you're gonna be asked to approve the updated strategic plan. So that that those are really just the things I wanted to call out. And I just, as a gentle reminder, we are going to be providing a year-end wrap-up for this year's work in June, so I just wanted to remind the board.
Questions for Dr. Mendoza or the team in regards to twenty-four April update? Hearing none, we'll move to a review of the disposal of materials, everything on that memo, any questions as to board administration in regards to disposal of materials? Hearing none, next up is the review of the FOIA report as attached. Any questions or clarifications requested from the board in regards to the FOIA report? Hearing none, next up is contracts under a thousand. We had two of them, one for Ron Lake Middle and one for Ron Lake High School. Any questions in regards to that for the administration? Perfect, hearing none there, we will now move to uh opportunity for public comment. As always, members of the public, we participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. And please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments will be accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting, and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, the electronic public comment will be provided to all board members in written form, and a link to the electric, electronic public comment form can be found online. We did not have any electronic public comment, do we have any local public comment? Mr. Grifold away is off notice, so we will move on from that. And uh now we will move to the Superintendent's Report and Dr. Mendoza.
So thank you, uh Board President Francisco and board members. Uh the Ron Lake, Ron Lake Area School District One sixteen, World Language Department will be hosting its second annual World Language Night tomorrow, April sixteenth from six to eight thirty P M at this very high school. Over thirty languages and cultures will be represented at this event, featuring authentic foods, games, music performances, and more. Congratulations to Jess Crone and Carolyn Corcoran for being selected to present at the Illinois State Board of Education Career Connections Conference on June eighteenth. At the ISBE Career Connections Conference, CTE educators exchange ideas, share best practices, and foster meaningful connections with peers and industry partners to improve student opportunities and extend learning for all students in the area of college and career readiness. Ron Lake's session will focus on how to adopt and grow a school-based enterprise through rapidly evolving landscapes such as technology trends, industry partner opportunities, and the need of a school community. They will show, share dashboard analytics from two thousand seventeen to present, summarizing database knowledge we have gained that has informed recent shifts in the direction of SBE. They will also examine how to maximize student ownership and student-centered learning through creative team roles and responsibilities, project choice, client interaction, and identifying student-based target markets. Below is a list of recently received donations. We are notifying the board in compliance with board policy. A thank you letter will be sent from the district to each donor. Eclipse Glasses and Water Bottles, State Bank of the Lakes to the district. That concludes the Superintendent's Report for this board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza, any questions for Dr. Mendoza in regards to that? And definitely great news, I love hearing that we're uh presenting uh and getting in front of people. Um look forward to the hearing to recap from the presentations and look forward to trying to do the same thing when we um have more opportunities down at triple I as well. All right, hearing no additional questions, we'll move to the Finance Committee update. We had a significant Finance Committee meeting this this evening, so take it away.
Thank you, and again, thank you to everyone's patience. We know we started a little late as the Finance Committee meeting ran over, so thank you. Uh first, we'll start off with uh out, as in past practice, I'll review the items that are on the finance agenda that are not uh will, that will not be reviewed later uh in the board agenda. Uh the first one being the expansion of student opportunities at the Lake County Tech Campus. Um this is a discussion item at the Finance Committee where administration has respectfully asked and support from Finance Committee. And then in turn, we will ask for the board's support as again, this is not an action item. Uh the tech campus, we currently send uh two hundred, hundred and seventy-five students. The administration is asking to increase that from tw- in addition, increase by approximately twenty-five to thirty-five students at a maximum cost of a hundred and fourteen thousand for the fiscal year twenty-four or for the school year twenty-four. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-four, the school year twenty-five, twenty, is that right, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, missed a year, I'll get it right. Sandy have any coffee today, that's, it's obviously showing through. Um so again, it's not an action, but uh administration's asking for our support. We haven't had an increase into the amount of students we've sent to the tech campus uh for five years, which is about.
Maybe a little more, even six.
Maybe five or six, and I do remember when we we brought that forward, um again, we are seeing an increased amount of students on our waitlist here at the high school. Um a lot and as we see more students are trying to utilize the tech campus to get a certified or certificate program so that when they graduate from the high school, they can enter into the workforce. And the tech campus offers a lot of opportunities for not just our students, but the Lake County students. A couple of questions that came out of it as well is what is the tech campus maximum capacity in students, because we'll send more, maybe other campuses are sending more, what is the the max that they could do? Which is about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred, we're gonna increase, let's say others do. And then we asked, what is the tech campuses plans in increasing their capacity? Obviously, this is a program that continues to grow. And um Dr. Mendoza also sits on that board and spoke to their plans to always increase as well and what that might look like. Um currently, we have eighteen kids on our waitlist. Um with increasing that uh enrollment option for our students, you know, we could probably get to hopefully none or at least maybe just a few. Um the Finance Committee is in support of this expansion of those additional uh seats of not to exceed a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and we definitely can absorb that in the budget. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, and if I could just also inform that we are um you know, in the top three schools that go to the tech campus, Ron Lake is in that top three. One and one Keegan are one and two.
Is there any reason, um is that enough?
I would say right now, yes, but I think, look, we have done, we've created this for the right reasons. You've got the college and career endorsements, the legislation, the PACE framework, all of the information that Jess Crone shared earlier. And we we are, we have a really good counseling staff here and we really want our kids to explore these opportunities. And so I think I, right now, yes. Is that to say next year, I might come back, not come back and say, uh, we might need a little bit more. Um I can't say that I wouldn't, but I think right now, this is a good number for us. Um and I will keep the board informed like every step of the way, um and we'll just go from there.
Do you think it's better to have a few slots on the waitlist? Hmm, or do you think it's better to not have a waitlist, or do you think it's better to have a little bit of a waitlist?
So generally what happens, and it's Lisa remembers this and Sarah remember this, but generally, the initial wave of course selections is bigger. So the number's bigger, and then there's some attrition over the summer. So usually by the time fall hits, we're in really good shape with not not having a ton of kids on the waitlist. The alternative there is, I I think I was sharing tonight, of the eighteen kids, twelve of them are sophomores. So they shouldn't be counting on going anyway. Um and then uh they also might get their second choice. So this isn't like one, you get one or nothing, there's multiple opportunities for them, and many of our kids who wanna go to the tech campus, you know, they have kind of a one and then another one they're considering, and so they may get their second choice, but it doesn't happen all the time, it's it's unusual.
All right, thank you, um so just confirming, there's no one opposed to this increase.
No one has any.
There's not a vote, but we just wanna make sure everyone is in support.
Yeah, I definitely fully support expanding it because again, as you talked about, um college is not the only pathway, there are so many alternates, and we need to make sure that we're providing those opportunities to students to use the pathway that they see best to fit them.
Great, thank you. Uh another topic on the agenda is the uh second step contract. Uh this is the social emotional learning curriculum for our kindergarten through fifth grade. Uh again, this is a, we'll be at the next board meeting, May sixth. It's for twenty-eight thousand uh six hundred and twenty dollars. Uh it's titled, funded through Title One Funds, uh some of the questions that came out, uh because again, this is kindergarten through fifth. What do we use for our middle school and high school, and there's programs utilized through the homeroom? Just making sure that uh the social emotional learning curriculum is available for all our students. And again, that'll come forward next board meeting, which is May sixth. Um next, I'm gonna do a little handout, and Yanira is gonna put something on the screen for it.
Ooh, multimedia.
All right, and on the screen for our viewing public, uh this is a rendering for Murphy Elementary. Uh we've talked about adding a Mur- adding a Murphy, adding elevator, see, no copy, adding an elevator to Murphy uh for some time, as we know, that building has a second story, it is not ADA compliant, where we've had students who've had some unfortunate leg breaks and then unable to get upstairs to their classroom. So this is the addition of the Murphy elevator. The um rendering that is on the screen is the inside. The elevator will go on the east side of the building or the entrance that faces Greenwood. Uh this will not have any implications onto classroom footprint. Uh the one we had looked at uh last year, the year prior, uh with a different architect, they had talked about putting it in the middle of the building, which would again, take away the footprint in the library or learning resource, the library. Or uh where it is currently, but we would take away some of the footprint of a classroom upstairs. This rendering takes no footprint from any of the classroom or space that's utilized within the building. It will change where the doors are, um thank you. Uh so you'll see, again, it'll go in against the stairwell. It will change the stairwell, but again, it won't real, it won't affect any of the the learning space, it'll just affect the stairwell. And there's another rendering of it, um again, you'll notice the main doors are shifted to the right and the elevator is to the left. And that is what it'll look like on the outside of the building. Again, currently, those doors are in the middle with those two side lights. The doors here are shifted to the left, that glass that you see on the right is the elevator.
So just as a point of clarification, on the green, the Greenwood entrance that as as it is right now would be changed from more of a, from more of a full entrance to just a a set of doors? Because the main entrance would then be going over back to where the main entrance actually is still i- is as of now.
The main entrance on Lynn- Linden?
Linden, yeah.
Linden, yes, I believe on that street, yes.
Yes.
On Linden will still remain the same, um this is.
But that one will just kind of be shrunk up to just the the door instead of the bigger.
Well, the doors are staying the same size, they're just shifted. The current elevation, the doors are more in the middle, and that side light, which is the elevator here, is on both sides equally, so really the doors are being shifted over.
This is clear, the the elevator is actually the brick in the middle, right? Because the platform where you come out of the elevator is the glass.
Is that right, Dr. Lamping?
That is, that is correct.
Just wanted to double check too.
Thank you.
I may make a point of just clarifying.
I may make a point of just clarification. So, um, S, the, the other architect, SDR, actually made, if you could go back a couple of slides. So in that rendering, SDR also brought the elevator to this side. It, but it was right behind where the cur- that box is. So it would have been right on that platform. Archon proposed it in the center of the building when they initially came here. SDR did not propose it in the center of the building.
Thank you for that.
Proposed it here as well, but it would have taken a little bit of the classroom.
Yeah, that I remember. Now again, this would not start till twenty twenty-five.
The elevator would be ordered, um, next month. And, um, still work would be started in the summer.
And, and we are working on some clarification with the elevator, uh, in working with, um, Archon. The elevator they proposed, and I forget the brand name.
Corin or Corrin?
All the elevators that we have in the district are Otis. And we're asking why can't it be an Otis so we can again, be consistent with. The materials, what we have in here when we ask for service. Should we need service for the elevators? So we, we know it's all Otis through the district. So we are waiting. From the architect in regards to that question, because unless they can give us a good reason as to why not to use an Otis elevator. We want an Otis elevator. And I know you're all perusing through the drawings. I don't know if there's any questions.
None for me. Looks good. The drawings look good.
And this will make the building fully accessible then.
Right.
And this will make the building fully accessible.
Fully ADA compliant, yes. Fifty years, but it took us, we got there. And that's it for the finance, um, agenda items. Um, again, there are others. But I will again, go through those as those come up on the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any uh, critical questions for finance committee? Hearing none, we will move now to some approvals.
Alright, I need a motion to approve the April first, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second to my Mrs. Larson. Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the accounts payable report for one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eight cents. The previous motions report for three hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-five cents. The March twenty twenty-four treasures report, the March twenty twenty-four P card report. And the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four employment report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mister Tavera, second to my Mister Jewett. Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, under old business, I need a motion to approve the district's new strategic plan. Including mission, core values and belief, overarching goals and portrait of a graduate.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mister Tavera, second to my Mister Jewett. Any questions? Hearing none? Roll call please.
Say, you have something, Mrs. Bennett?
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to know, and we haven't actually talked about this on the team yet, but we did ask as part of the communication plan. Uh, for testimonials from participants in the group. And I just checked the form and there are four. So I just wanted to share tonight. Out with you, just take a few minutes. Uh, the first one is from one of our parents who participated. Uh, she said, I'm grateful for the opportunity to contribute as a parent in this process. The careful planning and the insightful data provided to the team were pivotal in creating a practical and achievable plan. Uh, the next three are from building administrator participants. First one says, the process of working collaboratively with students, community members, staff members and board members was a productive process. All participants' voices were included in the process, which resulted in a product we can be proud to share. The next says, working with the various stakeholders to create a portrait of a graduate was an enriching journey. In which we worked to blend diverse perspectives into a unified, unified vision for student success. And the last says, being part of the District one sixteen's strategic planning process fills me with pride. As we developed future indicators to chart our course for the years ahead and created our inaugural portrait of a graduate. It's an honor to have participated in shaping the roadmap that will empower our, our community and students to reach new heights together.
Very nice, very nice indeed.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a new district strategic plan. Mission, core values and beliefs, overarching goals and a portrait of a graduate.
Alright, I need a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, second to my Mister Tavera. Any questions or clarifications? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, we're on to new business. The motion to approve the contract for professional development. For the twenty-three, twenty-four title, uh, for sixty-five hundred dollars that is funded under Title Two.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, second to my Mister Tavera. Clarification?
Yes, thank you. This was on the finance, uh, committee agenda. Um, Mrs. Dampf presented this. Uh, again, this is, um, as she put it, a reset for, uh. She says DCs and I think distribution center, sorry. Division chairs, right? Sorry. Uh, division chairs. Um, this is, the contract, some of the questions that came out of finance. The contract has a total of thirty, so we asked, you know, will we have thirty? What is, you know, zero buffer? There'll be twenty-nine. And again, they're using this as a, a reset for the professional learning. For the, uh, division chairs who will, uh, lead their buildings. That's it.
Do you, just holding your button now?
I'm just waiting for my name to recall.
Oh, okay.
I'm proactive like that.
Roll call please.
Mister Dura?
See, see how it works? Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
See, it didn't work so far for Mrs. Klingler. She had that light on and had to wait till the end. Motion carries.
Right, I need a motion to approve a one point oh FTE facilities groundskeeper floater position. Under the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget assumptions and the dollar amount of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, second to my Mister Jewett. Clarification?
Yes. Uh, again, this was at the finance meeting. Um, and as you notice, it says floater, uh, groundskeeper. Uh, so this position would be, uh, here at the high school and for the district itself. Uh, this position, uh, being split between the, between the two. Uh, when here at the high school, it's really to assist with, um, you know, as we saw tonight where we had soccer, baseball, softball. You know, or not soccer, what did I say, track? Anyway, like five events going on here at the building. Um, they need that additional, um, groundskeeper to assist with the. Maintenance of the baseball, the softball and all those fields, um, when we're hosting such events and, and just general maintenance upkeep. Of, of even the stadium itself. So again, during that time, they'll be here, um, at the high school. And then at the district when they need, um, the, the other part of the year. So again, the finance committee is definitely in support of this. Uh, it'll get two people here at the high school. That is needed. The high school will manage those people, those individuals. That'll give them two. Uh, groundskeepers here at the high school. So we asked us about the management of them so that both aren't on vacation at the same time. So we don't now pull from those district resources. Cause right now with one, when that person's out, we have to pull from the district resources. So this will again, assist with that and help the district overall.
And we don't have problems with gophers, correct?
Um, not yet. Let's hope not.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the bid award to Chicagoland Paving Contractors, Inc. In the amount of hundred seventy-five thousand for the concrete and paving improvements at Brown Lake Beach Elementary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Jewett, second to my Mrs. Klingler.
Um, this again, as, as it states, is the paving, uh, at Brown Lake Beach Elementary. This was put after the construction is, you know, we, last summer, we did the, um, library. Uh, construction improvement. So now this is to do the paving and the parking lot. This will not change the footprint. As it currently exists at beach, unlike when we did Murphy the year prior, where we changed the actual footprint. This will exactly stay the same.
Thank you for that clarification. Any additional questions? Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the addition of six additional coaching stipends for girls wrestling, girls flag football. And boys volleyball in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Francisco, second to my Mister Jewett. Clarifications?
Yes, thank you. Um, again, this was at finance committee. Um, is really, you know, reiterating the need, um, that is for boys volleyball. And for girls wrestling as, as, as you heard, uh, this evening, uh, with Mister Carol Zach's presentation in athletics. Uh, both very growing sports. And then as you heard also in his presentation, girls flag football now being an IHSA sport. Which again, uh, I know finance had brought that up when we, um, accepted the grant from the Chicago Bears that. We need to make sure we can afford to have coaches, our stipends for the girls' flag football program, which we now see before us.
Hearing no additional questions, roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the Comcast agreements for internet, internet services through the E-rate program. For the amount of one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, second to my Mrs. Larson. Clarification?
Yes, thank you. And again, uh, you'll see these are just one-year contracts. These are for the Welcome Center and the Old National Bank. And we are only doing these in, uh, one-year increments, doing two, as we don't know how long we'll be in these facilities. Uh, so we're taking these year by year.
Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the rental agreement with TC Furlong, Inc. For the sound equipment for this year's middle school promotion ceremonies in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Jewett, second to my Mrs. Larson.
And again, this is kind of a rinse and repeat for us. Uh, this is the, uh, contract that we did last year for our middle school promotions. Uh, using TC Furlong. Um, of course, that it does include rain dates and let's hope we don't need those.
Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the rental agreement with TC Furlong for the, uh, sound equipment for this year's high school gradu- graduation ceremony. In the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Tavera, second to my Mrs. Klingler.
And for this one, uh, this one is just slightly higher than last year's contract. So, uh, while still a rinse and repeat, so to speak. That the increase is due to additional camera for different, different angle for viewing and then additional. Microphones for the band, uh, so that way hopefully this year we can hear them.
Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the AT&T mobi- mobility bus wifi service agreement. Through the E-rate program in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mrs. Larson. And just as a clarification, this is. Basically switching us from T-Mobile to AT&amp;T, correct?
Yeah, so when we go out for E-rate, then it's just like any other bidding prob- process. T-Mobile is who we had last year. T-Mobile did not meet the requirements in the bidding process for the E-rate program, so we cannot accept their bid. Uh, so we did, uh, take AT&amp;T, but the question asked at finance also was. Why are we not using Comcast? Cause we use them for our other E-rate program, but they don't offer wifi on buses. And again, this is also a slight increase, cause if you, uh, recall, we have added an additional six buses to our fleet.
Thank you, and roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the contract for big tents events. In the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the stage and chairs for the eighth grade recognition ceremony.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, second to my Mister Jewett.
And again, this is a contract that's needed to have an additional four hundred chairs at the ceremony, cause we just don't have those on hand here. So we do need to rent those.
And roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the renewal of our membership with the Illinois High School Association. And the Illinois Elementary School Association in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Francisco, seconded by Mister Jewett.
And again, these are just our memberships, obviously with IHSA for athletic and club events.
Roll call please.
Mister Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yep.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the increase of one point oh FTE math teacher for the school year of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mister Jewett, second to my Mrs. Klingler.
So this is a request that came, uh, forward in regards to the high school with our foundations, uh, prep level courses. Um, due to the increase that we're seeing in that level of courses. Uh, we could just increase the class size. Wouldn't it be ideal for that course, for that level of instruction that? Those students need. Also, we would be asking for staff to take. staff to take a six si- uh sixth section class. Also, it would cost uh due to the contract, but we would have to pay teachers if they take that class, that hourly rate. But most importantly, wouldn't it wouldn't be ideal for the students in there, for that learning environment? So this request comes forward with that. Some of the questions that came out of finance as well is then do we see a trend in some of these other foundation classes? And it looks like we might see some trends coming forward that we might see some requests for the following years. So that is uh something that we asked for. Currently, this is just the one point O FTE math teacher.
Thank you for that. Hearing no additional questions. Roll call please.
Mister Tevera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes. Yes.
And a motion carries. Alright, next up we have the new business for elementary language arts curriculum resource adoption. Doctor Stefan, I think.
Alright, thank you for having us. All the fun starts now, cause we're gonna start some curriculum adoptions. Um so I am here again this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to bring forward a curriculum resource adoption specifically for our language arts curriculum. Um I have with me tonight Sarah Fontana, our literacy coordinator, and we're gonna be kind of going back and forth between uh slides within the presentation. Um it is also important to call out Melanie Knapp and Nadia Moreno from our multilingual education department. Uh they can be with us tonight, cause they're hoping to find some excellent staff members and they're in Spain right now. So I'll be covering all the Spanish language information for this evening. Um so the joys of the clicking and the flipping papers, I apologize. So our first slide here um goes over the English Language Adoption Committee timeline for actually English and Spanish. But it's important to note that the visual that you have there was specifically for our English Language Arts Committee. And you will th- see throughout the presentation, ELA, SLA. ELA is in reference to English Language Arts and then SLA is the Spanish Language Arts. For the most part, these committees follow the exact same timeline as far as the purpose, but the dates would be different for when the Spanish committee met. So you can see here that we had thirty-one teachers and administrators on the English Language Arts Committee. It's important to call out that we did have building administrators support on that team. We had Casey Kurtz and Jen Malecki. Both join us um on that team and our Spanish Language Arts Committee. We had um uh James Tomee supported as a building administrator on that committee. Uh the way we formed our committees was in partnership with the um Earl leadership. They sent out surveys, they reached out to teachers to identify staff, and then we worked with them. If there were certain grade levels where staff didn't volunteer and we kinda helped balance things. So moving on from there, you can see what the focus of the particular areas were in each of these meetings. It's very similar to, it's actually almost identical to kinda how we broke things out for the math committee. So some of these slides will look familiar. Uh we started off with a team meeting and our team meeting for literacy, we really focused on best practices and literacy instruction and looking at, looking for resources that would be all in Spanish again, but then also aligned to the science of reading. Um and then they, we followed with vendor presentations over two days. Then we had a vendor debrief with the teach- with the committee where we just kinda went through their deciding rubrics and how we wanted to move forward. And at that point, we got us down to selecting our vendors and doing a full day of vendor resource review for our top two vendors. And then had a final meeting where we basically presented to them, this is our recommendation and got all kinds of feedback from them. In that, based on our recommendation. And the final piece here shows the date that we are meeting with all of you to bring it to the board. So in the process of reviewing vendors, we did bring the exact same vendors to both the English Language Arts Committee and the Spanish Language Arts Committee. It was important that they functioned in two different committees. Um just because teaching dual language can be very, very different than teaching in a monolingual setting, and we wanted to kinda give credit to both of those areas. Um it's also important to note that we did not require that they had to come to the same vendor. We really left it up to their expertise and what they were looking for. Um and I would say that the kind of the stars aligned and it, I'll show you the numbers, but it worked out that both committees selected the same top two vendors uh with benchmark education and then uh with the Advance and Adelante. And then into reading and Arriba la lectura were the other two vendors that, or was the other vendor that was selected. I do wanna call out to another item on the board agenda. Uh Dr. Abgar is gonna talk about a partnership with a organization called Adelante Consulting. Just so happens, it's completely different. Um benchmark education, the name of their Spanish Language Arts curriculum is called Adelante. And then the name of the consultant we work with is also called Adelante Consulting. So totally different, but just important to call out. That came up in finance and I didn't wanna miss that. Uh so with that being said, out of the top two vendors, we did land on benchmark education. Again, the English Language Arts curriculum is titled Advance and then their Spanish is referred to as Adelante. So next up, here are the fun stats. And this uh was tricky. You'll notice Spanish Language Arts is very similar to what we brought to you with math. Where it was a fifty-fifty split in math. So we had to work really closely with Earl leadership to really dive into more than what the teachers did. Um and bring back a recommendation ba- based on our additional research. Um in this particular case, English Language Arts was very heavily tipped towards looking at benchmark as their preferred vendor. So then that left us to sit again with Earl leadership and kinda make the decision of, does it make sense to go with benchmark education for Spanish? Or should we consider the other vendor? Uh and Sarah will dive a lot more into kind of the specific pieces that we looked at uh that helped us come to the conclusion of our final recommendation. So at this point, Sarah will pick it up.
Alright, um one of the key components that we looked at was the pacing and copyright information for the top two vendors. And benchmark, both in Advance and Adelante, were more recent additions than the HMH Into Reading Program. In light of the, it seems like daily more research is coming out on the science of reading and best practices on early literacy as well as best programming models for multilingual education. So we felt a newer addition would provide more support in alignment with the current research. In addition, the pacing information uh with Benchmark is a little bit more flexible that we felt would better work within our current master schedule within the elementary curriculum. As much as I would love to spend two hundred and thirty minutes every day learning literacy in the classroom, we know that we're working within an instructional timeframe. And Benchmark offers that flexibility to work within their program and still deliver a um an instructional model that stays true to the program and fidelity uh that they recommend. We did solicit at the beginning of the process, other district feedback. Um what you will see in the next two slides, both for ELA and for SLA in in regard to district feedback is not a lot of local um districts are currently using the most recent model. So a lot of districts are using uh Benchmark Advance and Adelante in their earlier versions. But with every district, there is a curriculum cycle uh adoption process. And so some of, many of the districts are currently using their previous version and have it moved over to the newer one. However, Benchmark has provided us a number of contacts of various districts nationwide that are using. There's a lot in Wisconsin, a lot in Florida, especially with the newer uh SLA and dual language curriculum. So we have gotten more information with that. What I do wanna point out um particularly in some of the feedback information is you might see the commentary about supplemental uh supports for writing or foundational skills. This is not uncommon for any, a language arts curriculum. Language arts and literacy is a very big uh lot of domains, reading, writing, oral reading fluency. And so it's not uncommon for language arts curriculum to be supplemented, because it's really hard to do all of them at the you know, top tier. So it's not alarming for us that Schaumburg developed and beefed up their writing program. Huntley uh beefed up with some supplemental foundational skills. Our intent is to use Benchmark um and only Benchmark for our first year. And for us to see what is best uh for our students. So we do not intend on supplementing at all, even though a couple districts have done that in, as they've continued throughout the program. So next year with board approval, we will roll out and live with Benchmark. So that way we could um assess it, how it works and its needs for our students. Another feature um that we, really was important for us in evaluating the curriculum is its connection to, you wanna flip one more? Thank you. Um to the access test and the IAR. So the access assessment is what um our students uh who receive multilingual support take yearly. And the IAR is also our Illinois Assessment for Readiness Assessment that our students in third through eighth grade take. So in looking at the products, we wanted to see, we wanna obviously make sure we select a program and resource that will support preparation for our students, both on the access test and the IAR test. And we felt Benchmark does a really nice job uh not only in their assessments, aligning to both of these assessments. Uh but also in their rigor. You you will see in the digital uh assessment features within this program. They model a lot of the access and IAR test prep. So you'll see two-part questions. You'll see similar digital tools that are on the state assessments are also on Benchmark. Preparing our students and getting them more used to uh that format and that style of assessment within there. Also, uh there is a lot of instructional support for oral uh fluency and speaking and listening skills, which is imperative and super important within our access tests. So that was important to us, that the product really enhances and supports our students or oral fluency throughout. And then lastly, in connection with the access and IAR test, uh Benchmark really focuses a lot of probably about, say, fifty to sixty percent of their units are nonfiction and science and social studies alignment. That is really important for our dual language integration uh in supporting our bilateral literacy model. But also in the IAR version, uh nonfiction texts represent two-thirds of the texts that students will see. So we really wanted to make sure that we were incorporating a lot of nonfiction and Benchmark does a really nice job within that. Another area that we wanted to look at is of what product will best support our programmatic and diverse student needs. And one key feature that stood out for Benchmark over the competitors was that they had the same knowledge strand for all grades K through five happening at the same time. So for instance, uh unit one, I believe, is life cycles. That same topic and theme is covered kindergarten through fifth grade at the same time. Obviously, the knowledge increases and grows and expands, but not only is this a benefit for our students on in- increasing background knowledge. Especially in those nonfiction, science and social studies elements. But this is also a boon for our classroom teachers who work with students in multiple grades. So we have um our instructional classrooms at elementary are often have two or three grade levels of students in one classroom. So from a teacher perspective, working with first and second graders in the same class, having the same knowledge strand happening at the same time will be an advantage in preparing and working with the students and and collaborating there. And then also, we have a lot of support staff in our reading specialists, our multilingual resource teachers, special education resource teachers that push into multiple grade levels in a building. So having a similar knowledge strand and theme happening at the same time will help in that preparation and they're not worried about life cycles here and then reading uh fiction texts i- in a different grade level at the same time. So we feel that this was a good advantage that we really wanted to kind of capture that uh stood out with Benchmark in comparison to some of the other programs. The next two slides cover a lot of the supplemental support considerations that Benchmark offers. Our focus for this committee was really centered on tier one classroom core instruction. So that was where a lot of our focus was in evaluating and scoring these products uh for our main Advance and Adelante program. But Benchmark does offer a lot of supplemental supports that we intend as uh with board approval with this adoption, that we intend over the next year, really digging in for a lot of these support programs and how they could help with intervention or tier two or tier three MTSS supports within the classroom as well. I will uh point out that on this first slide, the, these programs support multilingual learners. And you will see that we do have Express. We were able to, the multilingual department was able to evaluate Express and the English Language Development Support. And so they do have that put forward on today's board packet for that product. But the other supplemental supports that you see on this slide and the next slide are things that we intend to look and take a deeper dive with more specialized teachers that would be utilizing um these potential supports and how they might meet uh differing needs within our school over the coming years. But I will point out that the tier one program for Benchmark already embeds a lot of scaffolds, a lot of intervention and English Language Development Support within the core program. So we do feel that we have a lot of strong uh supports within that core program and why we could do our due diligence on some of these supplemental products um and resources uh later on in the process. And the last uh few kind of components, probably the most important, is really centered on how does the product support literacy development for all of our students. We s- really started off working with the teachers on focusing our attention on Illinois's guiding values for literacy. And really in a nutshell, that is making sure that we're thinking about all students and that whatever product that we choose, uh all students have equitable access to high-quality instruction and uh supports and products and resources. Uh we wanted to ensure that, as Dr. Stefan said, that we are supporting a bilateral literacy, a multilingual two, two or more language success for our students uh within that and that the assessments are reliable and valid and are good measures of student success within literacy. And so part of that focus as we uh kinda dug deep within our committee was really looking at the Illinois State Literacy Plan. At the time of when we started the committee, the uh, the state had not adopted the final version yet. However, there are many drafts out there, so we were bringing that in and really uh working with our teachers and understanding uh the state's support model and the seven components of literacy. In January of this year, the state did formally adopt the Illinois State Literacy Plan. And they break down literacy into seven components, which is a little bit more than I think a lot of teachers were used to. And what you see on these next two slides are kind of the key components that Benchmark Advance and Adelante support within those seven components of literacy. They, as I mentioned, they have a strong oracy uh instructional model. They really dig deep on phonological awareness, which has been a gap in early literacy for many years uh nationwide. And so it was, it was important for us to really see how that is called out within the program. Word recognition and fluency, um and then vocabulary comprehension and writing. Uh for those that've worked with me for a long time, uh writing is really important and something that is an area that not all vendors and products do well. And we were impressed with the strong writing instruction and alignment to the state assessments that the per- the program brought in there. And all of these components within the state literacy plan and through Benchmark really offer support for all of our multilingual learners, advanced learners, uh learners with special needs, interventions and supports. Uh the core program really does a nice job of highlighting how we could support students uh at all levels within that core program, within these seven uh components of literacy that's supported through the Illinois State Literacy Plan.
So then diving in, so as Sarah kinda noted, the importance of making sure that the curriculum would meet the needs of the diverse learners within our district. Uh again, we wanted to call out the requirement that they really attended to equity and literacy instruction. So there's some key features noted on this slide and many of them speak specifically to language learners. But I think it's also important to call out that the new edition of Benchmark Curriculum actually was given in uh a rating by Ed Reports, which is actually one of the organizations that we use to determine our rubric. And they were given all green ratings, which is the highest that you can get in every category. And they really focus on text quality and complexity alignment to standards, building knowledge with text vocabulary and tasks, and also the usability. And when they're looking at like the text quality, they have key features where they call out that it definitely
that it definitely represents all different types of students that you may see in your classrooms. So that was something we were really impressed with as well. When you dive in now to the language development support, I have to call out that I was really excited to hear that Melanie and Nadia, Ms. Knapp and Ms. Moreno, both took the initiative to reach out to Benchmark to dive in more and learn more about their curriculum because it's so common that Spanish curriculum is just a translation of the English. And when we were diving in, it didn't look that way, but they really wanted to learn more. And they were given the opportunity to actually meet with one of the authors of the Spanish curriculum. So through that process, I think they felt really solid about what the program was designed to do. Because there's a key focus in the, in the curriculum on making sure that language development is a focus. Yes, Spanish language development in a dual-language setting. But they even call out English language development. And there's key supports that you'll see on this next slide. I know it's really tiny print, doesn't necessarily matter the detail. But really what this document is doing for the teacher, if you look at the key on the left top-hand corner there, you see that it talks about it color codes for a dual-language teacher. Is this a transferable skill between the two languages? Is it something I should only teach explicitly in one of the languages? And then they, it references a resource for them that's called the Cross-Linguistic Transfer Handbook to call out like where they can get actual, like actual support and help on how to deliver that instruction. And this is like, we were super excited about this resource for our dual-language teachers. They were very excited about it because it's just not something that you see in a lot of curriculum. It is up and coming. We're hearing a lot of people talking about it. And if I remember correctly, Benchmark even was like showing us visuals like this, but their print copy is coming out in August. So it's a newer resource. People are working to develop as dual-language develops. But it was a pretty important feature for the teachers especially. But Melanie and Nadia were pretty excited about it as well. So the next slide I'm going to jump to is going to speak to the home connection. And you'll see there's a couple key points, just like we had with the math curriculum. They do provide letters home to families in a variety of different languages. And then there definitely are activities that can be sent home to help extend the learning at home. And students will have digital access to the resources while on their iPads in school and at home. So this slide speaks to metrics for success. And you can see there's really four key components that we'll be looking at. I do want to say that number one is really teacher feedback. A lot of our initial drive in this was focused on our teacher feedback and just let work-life balance and supporting them and providing a resource that would help their lesson planning and their just efficiency with their job. So we will definitely be developing a way to collect feedback from teachers on how the resource is working for them. But then, of course, we'll also be looking at a variety of different assessment tools with iReady Access and IAR. And I know it came up in the math committee and came up again as well, not math committee, math presentation and the finance committee. Just how, when do we anticipate seeing results and kind of what we're thinking on that? Again, these are the four pieces that we'll look at. I do feel that Year One is absolutely going to be a learning curve. Their math and language arts are different. Math is a learning curve because teachers are being asked to teach math in a way they may not have learned math. However, the math resource is very well-scripted. It's pretty straightforward in a sense of what lesson comes next and what you do. Whereas language arts is something teachers are super passionate about at the elementary level. They love to teach reading in most cases, but it is very complex. And the resources are very extensive. So figuring out your lesson planning, there'll be a lot there for them is a resource, but it'll require learning on their part of like, does it make sense to do this here, that there? And, you know, that I think is going to take them a little bit more time to adjust to. So my overall belief is definitely by Year Three, we would start to see a change in our data. And of course, cautiously optimistic that it would be sooner than that. But I really think Year One is just going to be a heavy lift of learning curve for teachers. But these will be the tools that we'll for sure look at. So now we get into the cost of moving with this, into this program, English Language Arts. The total cost is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. Spanish is four hundred and one thousand, six hundred and four dollars. And then to add the Express, it's important to call out that that will, the Express English Language Development Program will only be paid for on a yearly basis because we're going to use Title III funds, which are dedicated for multilingual education supplemental materials. So we'll cover that cost every single year as the grant is opened. The other cost will be a total cost for three years, getting the resources now and then the three-year access. We did, Dr. Kivens did build into the contract a ten percent kind of wiggle room, you could call it. If our enrollment increases by more than ten percent, we will have to increase cost. But we do have some room in there for some slight changes. So you can see the total cost then comes to eight hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. It's definitely important to talk about some of the cost savings that Dr. Kivens negotiated within this contract. When you look at the quotes that are attached in the board packet, you will see that we are not paying for any professional development. That was all provided free of cost. And then we are also getting three additional resources at no cost. We're getting letter tiles for Spanish and English classrooms for grades K through one. We're getting K through five trade books, which are classroom libraries for all classrooms. And then K through five teachers manuals are being provided for free for any of our multilingual education resource teachers, special education resource teachers, interventionists, and curriculum instruction specialists. It is also important to note that the cost in there does include our dual-language first, second, and third-grade classrooms need the materials in both English and Spanish because of the amount of time within the day that they teach in English and in Spanish. So that total cost savings then comes to a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. So a couple more wrap-up slides with professional development. We shared this exact slide at the, during the math presentation. Our February and March SIP days are all done, but now we've got April coming up, where we will be talking about iReady Math this Wednesday. And our second step, Social Emotional Learning Curriculum will be reviewed. And then in May, we will be focusing on Benchmark and Advance and Adelante Training for Staff. And then to wrap up the rest of the year, there will be some things we will be working, a lot of things we'll be working on preparing. We'll be reviewing a lot of the, the teachers will be getting the teacher's additions for math. English Language Arts is a bit trickier because there's a teacher's addition for all ten units. So we'll, we'll work with Earl to determine exactly how we want to do that upfront. But math, we definitely are handing those out on Wednesday. And we have a lot of work in the background that we're doing in partnership with Earl Leadership regarding our standards and rubrics. The technology team is great and been on board and working with us and getting the integrations going. And then we do have the big lift on previously mentioned in regards to the organization and packing and moving and of, of all things. So with that being said, are there any questions?
So just to reiterate, this was also on the finance committee. And I know Dr. Stefan spoke to the questions we had in regards to, how will this be implemented? When, when do we see results? And then again, the Adelante, just wondering, was there a correlation there? Just seemed awful coincidental, but was the question worth an ask?
So something occurred to me. I was thinking about putting the strategic plan together. And when we were talking during the strategic plan session, there's almost this trajectory of student learning. And if you, if, there's a general sense that if we're behind, so to speak, and we need to get not just caught up, but needing to get caught up and then, and jump. So then I'm thinking, add in the new factor of the curriculum where you think it's going to be here, but it's actually going to level out. We may want to consider other interventions that are going to continue to accelerate that process to not just offset the loss, the COVID loss, but also offset the curriculum change.
Yes. One thing I actually just recently said, I was working with our district team on our multi-tiered system of support, and we always have assistant principals there. And I was just saying, it was past Friday, I said, man, am I grateful that we are in Year Three of MTSS at elementary because we have the systems in place and we have the Branching Minds platform and we did the training for staff. So at the start of the school year, every single teacher in Branching Minds will see their case, their roster. And any student where the teacher the year before had concerns and brought them to the table for discussion and data tracking, there will be a, a attached student profile form and they can click it and see everything that they did. I don't think that we ever did that in Round Lake. So I'm super excited about that. It was actually Katie Carden over at Indian Hill that was like, let's take all of this form and put it on like a summarized box at the very top. So every teacher just opens the form. What did you work on? Was it reading? Was it math? Was it behavior? What were the supports? So they know who to go to, especially with all the kids moving. Not so much, well, kids, yes, but teachers moving. It will allow a level of communication and access to data and information that they've never had. So that gives them at least an idea of like, okay, I got new curriculum. I don't know these kids. What should I be thinking of right away in regards to the kids? And it should help to direct them to that piece. So that is something that for me, I think will be very helpful for them, knowing upfront. Like, these are the key kids I want to keep my eye out for on top of learning all the curriculum. So I do think that, when you talked about intervention, that's what jumped in my head is that we do have that in place, that they'll know right away who is an intervention.
The other thing, Dr. Stefan, can you just touch, you covered this the last time Katie did. But can you talk briefly about iReady in the individualized learning plans that get put out? Before you do that, I just also want to remind the board that one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we got from our teachers is this idea of stress, balance, workload. What this will do on some level is shift away from, I guess, we're raising the floor, I guess. So some teachers are just better at developing than others. It's not good or bad. We want our teachers focused on implementation. You're never fully going to make it perfect. I think that's the one thing that we have been very clear on, is there's going to be some things that we have to supplement. But in the end, this will on some level shift and just allow our teachers to focus on implementation and not organizing and developing and implementation, which is a big deal. So.
Yes. So with the iReady piece for assessment in reading, that will offer a level, because there's really two pieces to that resource. The kids will take the iReady assessment and then they get their individualized learning platform. So right away, bas- basically the program tells them, these are your areas that you need extra support on. But there's also, I'm not sure what the exact name is, but basically like a toolbox of lesson plans. So the teacher can also say, I see on what we're doing in class right now, you need extra help here and assign that through iReady. So there, that is an additional layer of like, how do I, knowing a kid needs help, what it kind of, to what Dr. Mendoza was talking about, where do I begin? Right away, they will know. They can pull from those. And then like Ms. Fontana said, there's a, a ton of resources in Benchmark. And that's where I think the learning curve, like iReady might be a bit easier place for them to start because there's so much in Benchmark for them. I think we'll take at least a year for them to kind of decide what are the best activities in here to support learning gaps. But they'll definitely have some resources in their, at their fingertips for sure.
All right.
All right. With that, I need a motion to approve entering into a partnership with Benchmark Education for Benchmark Advanced and Adelante Programs as a core language arts curricular resource for K through five elementary classrooms at a total cost of eight hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents to be paid out of district funds and Title III funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tever?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve a five-year lease agreement with Quad, I know I'm going to say this wrong, Quadrant Leasing for May first, twenty twenty-four through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Budget, budget of fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Jewitt.
And this was on Finance Committee agenda. Again, we always have a postage machine. We do, we are adding a second one at Calvary. The edu, gosh, I knew it was going to mess that up.
Education Service Center.
Education Service Center. Thank you.
And you got, you got a long-term deal, a five-year deal. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tever?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Eppcar, were you presenting on this one? Okay. Sorry, Dr. Eppcar. I said, miss.
So this, this request is for an extended contract with Adalante Educational Specialist Group. This year, Ms. Knapp led a team to develop a three-year action plan to improve the dual-language program. And this contract will be to develop curriculum mapping and standard mapping for sixth-grade Spanish Language Arts and then also curriculum consultation and professional development for elementary programming. And this will result in an increase in expenditures in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. And it will be budgeted to the Title III grant.
So again, thank you, Dr. Eppcar. So again, this was at the finance meeting. This has been reviewed. And as Dr. Eppcar, this is an extension of the current, so we are currently utilizing this as an extension into a three-year contract.
Just clarification, it's just for the school year.
Yes, sorry. Just the school year. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Did we get a motion?
No.
Yeah, also.
Need a motion to approve entering into an extended contract with Adalante Educational Specialist Group for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred dollars funded out of Title III grant.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mr. Tevera. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tever?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to positive occurrences. I'll kick it off NSBA. I was able to go with Ms. Larson and Ms. Lee. And it was a great, great event, great education. We will plan on delivering our full recaps at the May twentieth meeting. So for the three of us, please make sure we get on our recaps to in here as soon as possible, and we will go over those on the May twentieth meeting. And then the other one that I'm going to throw out there was had the ability and the pleasure to go to the EdRed Legislative Action Day back on April the tenth with Dr. Eppcar down to Springfield. We were actually able to have sit-down meetings with both Senator Edley Allen as well as Representative Pavar Diaz. It was a great, a great opportunity to get EdRed in front of our legislators, to introduce our legislators to EdRed, to EdRed possibilities, and of course, to continue our conversation with our legislators as well. Looking forward to continuing to do that. This was my third or fourth foray into the legislative in, in Springfield. So great, great job. And definitely anyone else who's interested in it, it's, it's. it's, it's very enlightening, very, very enlightening, so. And I couldn't have asked for a better partner than Dr. Eppcar. Did a great job of tag teaming that and working through all of the legislative agenda.
Okay, so I got to go to a couple of track meets recently, and I just want to.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Well, no, that's just, that's for my personal, when I had to do track meets.
That's like fifteen hours. I'm just, no, I'm kidding.
Fifteen hours for eighteen seconds worth of your kid running.
To watch my kid for eighteen seconds. No, I, I will say that I just love our parents and our community. When they come out, they show up and they show out, no matter how tired, no matter how exhausted. They're there, they're happy and spirited, so I just wanted to call it out.
I just really wanted to comment on, you know, the Firehouse Dogs, the, they meet, the fire, the Round Lake Fire Department reaching out to the school district and the art department. That is a true collaboration and great community event. Community engagement for the district. And the artwork was amazing. They did an amazing job on, on the Firehouse Dogs. So just kudos to everyone involved with that. It was a really great example of community engagement.
I would just say did over all of those, including the, the NSBA, so.
The other thing is the Talent Expo. Actually, I got to, you know, watch through, but again, it's always nice to see when the students are highlighted across the district in one event. Great job to those who put that together as well.
Yep, and then just a reminder, we've got World Language Night is coming up tomorrow night. That's going to be an exciting one for sure. Yep, and then we, the board, we have our self-evaluation on Wednesday evening. Looking forward to that. And then all the other, I know there's a couple hours on the calendar. Got a coed track and field invite coming up on the weekend. So definitely a lot of, a lot of good fun things to be engaged with. All right, I need future agenda items. Anyone want to add to, add to the fun?
Can I just update the board on the future agenda items? Tonight, you heard the cell phone information. The wrestling item was present, was shared two weeks ago during the weekly. In June, we plan on bringing the therapy dog item back. And then at the first.
I need a therapy dog tonight.
First May meeting, we will bring the post-secondary support with the Schuler update. So just letting you know, I haven't forgot about any of those.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Well, I was at NSBA, I got to see two of them, so I'm just saying.
Thank you for that on the recap of those and looking forward to the rest of those. And next up, we have some approval of closed session minutes from prior meeting.
Need a motion to approve the March 18th, 2024 regular board meeting closed session minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second in by Mrs. Klingler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to convene a closed session as permitted by Statute 5 ILCS 120/2 for the purpose of discussing the following: Real Estate Matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C5; Employment Matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C1; and Closed Meeting Minutes, 5 ILCS 120/2C21.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second in by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.